Okay, welcome to our council meeting tonight. I'd like to call our council meeting to order by our city clerk, our new city clerk, Kathy Valdez.
The records shall reflect that all members are present.
Okay, the next thing, if you'll please rise, we're going to have a pledge of allegiance, which will be led by Councilmember Rigby. And our invocation will be led by Vera Bayless. She's past president of Brother Benno's Auxiliary. Welcome.
Heavenly Father, we are gathering here today to discuss the issues for the good of the city of Vista. Give us the guidance to take the necessary steps forward to keep Vista a safe and viable place for all its citizens and visitors. As we work together, may we gain the support from each other and have positive resolutions to keep all the needs of our community. Help us to open our hearts to those in need locally and nationally, like the people who are suffering from disasters and are coping with the loss of family members, neighbors, homes, businesses, like in the south and the Midwest and eastern states who have suffered harsh weather conditions. We should also hope for rain to alleviate our drought here in California, something that affects all of us. We should be grateful to be living in the city of Vista. For over 50 years, it has been a great place to live, to work, as well as welcoming place for visitors. May it remain that way in the future. Let us be thankful for living in this amazing city, state, and nation, and be very thankful to our military that protects us and sacrifices so much every day so we can be free. God bless America. Amen.
Thank you. In accordance with the Brown Act, I'd like to announce that as a result of convening simultaneous meetings, the members of the Buenos Sanitation District will receive compensation of $147.75 for the district meeting pursuant to Buenos Sanitation District Ordinance 2006-1. So the approval of the agenda is next by our city manager, Patrick Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. There are no changes this evening.
And we did not have a closed session today, so with that, we will move on to our presentations. And our first presentation is, I'll have them come forward, and I'm going to have the council join me down at the podium down here, Lieutenant Scott Black and the representative from the California Highway Patrol. If they'll come down here at the podium and make the presentation of the vehicle theft recognition. I think it's Deputy Tyler Ackerman, so if you all will join me down there. Alex, too. I'm going to turn it over to you, actually. No?
Turn it over to Amy.
Okay. Hi, welcome.
I'm Captain Amy Mang with the California Highway Patrol. And the California Highway Patrol is the coordinator statewide for vehicle theft, vehicle theft recovery. And so for me, this is a wonderful occasion to be able to come and to honor a couple of deputies who have worked tirelessly toward recovery of vehicles that have been stolen. I'm sure if you've ever been a victim of that or know someone that is, that you understand the importance of that and their hard work. In order for them to be recognized with what we call a 10-8-5-1 PIN, and 10-8-5-1 is the vehicle code section for vehicle theft, so it's a 10-8-5-1 PIN in our line of business, and it's quite a coveted PIN. In order for them to get that, they have to meet one of three requirements. One of those is they get a total of 12 stolen vehicles. Three of those are what we call a roller, which means it's occupied, so there was somebody in it when they got it. So an arrest in accordance with that. Or six of those rollers, so six vehicles that are occupied that they recovered. Or they end up getting information that leads to what's referred to as a chop shop. But it has to be at least 10 or more vehicles recovered with at least six, excuse me, two arrests for those. And so these two deputies have worked very, very hard, and this is not, for each of them, this is not their first 10-8-5-1 PIN. So they covet this. They work for this. This is truly what they do day in and day out. And so Deputy Tyler Ackerman, this is his second award, and he has three rollers and nine abandoned vehicles for a total street value of $131,000. And then the other two, actually, are for the same deputy.
I want Vicky Hebden, Jennifer Blackstock, Jeff Otto, Andrew Norris, Elizabeth Summers,
And so that is for Deputy Alexander Burst, excuse me, Brust.
Roger Rowe, and Bob DiMaggio to please come to the podium to accept a proclamation declaring
And so he gets a second and a third, all in the same year.
October 17 through October 19, 2015, to be Knights of Columbus Tootsie Roll Days,
So he really, really worked overtime on this, for a total of just over $164,000.
Drive Days in the city of Vista.
So he had a total of six rollers and 19 abandoned vehicles that he recovered.
So come forward. I have a proclamation for you, and I think we all might have a little donation for you. So I'm going to read the proclamation here.
So again, he gets a second and a third.
So who's going to accept the proclamation?
And with each of those, he gets the certificate, and he also gets the PIN.
Okay, you're going to have to show the pretty part. There's a proclamation for you. I'm going to read this. It's, "Whereas the Knights of Columbus will hold the 28th Annual Tootsie Roll Drive on October 17, 18, and 19, 2015, and whereas over 550 councils of the Knights of Columbus in California will conduct their annual candy drive in communities across the state to raise funds for intellectually disabled children and adults in California. Whereas all money collected locally will be donated to Downstown, a nonprofit organization with residential homes in North County for adults with developmental disabilities such as Down syndrome. And whereas intellectually disabled citizens are productive, contributing members of society, and funds raised through this candy drive will assist Downstown in supporting the continued independence of these citizens. The Vista City Council offers its sincere appreciation and support of all involved with this candy drive and commend them for their efforts to help others. So now therefore, the mayor and members of our Vista City Council do hereby proclaim October 17, 18, and 19, 2015 as Knights of Columbus Tootsie Roll Drive Days in Vista. And we urge all citizens to support this important fundraising activity to help the intellectually disabled children and adults in Vista and throughout California." So good luck to you guys, and I hope you raise lots of money. I have a donation for you. There you go. You're welcome.
Thank you very much.
Sure, sure, they can. Give them a second to finish collecting any money or pass out Tootsie Rolls. And then while they're doing that, we can get ready for our next presentation. We have David Willis, Chief Executive Officer of the San Diego Blood Bank, and he's going to come forward to discuss the blood bank's involvement with the community. So welcome, Mr. Willis.
Just do it. Just rip the Band-Aid. Well, hi. Nice to see some of you again, actually from our August kind of hard hat party. Thank you for the opportunity. I just wanted to provide the council with an update of how we're doing and why we're so excited to be building this facility in Vista. Just three short slides about San Diego Blood Bank 2.0. This is our building here, I'm not sure that's, oh, that is pointing, over on Via Center Way. And our mission remains the same. We were founded in 1950, and we were founded to save lives in partnership with our community with quality blood services. We've been serving the San Diego, Imperial, Orange County, and LA counties for a very long time. We have an incredibly dedicated donor base in Vista, which is why we're so excited to put this new facility in this city. We're over by Tri-City Hospital, so we've been there since 1987, and we're moving over in December. I still can't quite target exactly the opening date, but we'll be embodying our future directions in this new facility. This is the great thing about San Diego Blood Bank, is our history. Not only do we serve Southern California, but we serve the region of Southern California. And in times of emergency, we actually serve the country. And so this is one image here in the center where we've, at the PSA jet crash in San Diego, no call to action, many people rushed in to help our community. Same thing happened on 9/11, and in fact, the first blood that was delivered to New York came from San Diego Blood Bank. We beat the rest of the country in sending blood to that facility. We had a relationship with the Navy, so while the rest of the country was kind of transportation-challenged, we actually got there first. We were recently called, unfortunately, for Oregon as well, just very, very recently, and we supplied blood and products to them as well. But why are we so excited? So this will be the first facility of all of our facilities in the Southern California region that'll embody our new direction. So while our core mission is to collect and process and test blood and have it ready for those patients in need, we're also extending our capabilities to have even more impact in our community's health. And we're doing that by two ways. One is leveraging our infrastructure, so we'll be providing additional health and wellness services and education. We've already started a little bit of that at Gateway, but we don't have quite the same facilities that we'll have in Vista, so that'll be quite exciting. And finally, we'll be extending our capabilities into research, so clinical trials, basic clinical research. And actually, we just got funding from UCSD, in which we're partnering, and we're actually putting a telemedicine suite in our new Vista center. And so people will be able to come in, if they're part of a clinical trial, and be seen by physicians down in La Jolla, UCSD, up here in Vista. So it's a very unique way to begin to leverage the blood bank, again, to have even greater impact in our community's health. So I would look forward, we've been partnering a bit with the Vista Chamber of Commerce, and so we'll certainly have a ribbon-cutting ceremony when we open in December. Walls are going up, so we were just up here the other day, and it's actually exciting to kind of see it all come into reality. So thank you for the chance of giving an update, and I'll look forward to seeing you again in December.
Thank you. Thank you for your update. We appreciate it. Next on our agenda, we have a presentation by Dr. Devin Vodichka, the Vista Unified School District Superintendent on the Vista Partnership for Children. Welcome, Dr. Vodichka.
Thank you. Good evening. Thank you so much for providing me with this opportunity to share about the Vista Partnership for Children. I want to start, actually, with a little bit of story before jumping into the slides. So I'm in my fourth year now as superintendent in Vista. Love being here. This is a fantastic place to be. And in my first year, I would have meetings with many different community partners who were providing services and helping our children in the community. And just as a small example, one week I might have a meeting with an agency that's trying to provide shoes for students who maybe can't purchase their own. And they would talk about the amazing work that they're doing, and I would thank them for their generosity. And then the next week, I would have a meeting with a different agency that was also trying to provide shoes for students who maybe can't purchase them. And I would ask the second one if they were aware of the first agency, and often, they weren't aware of the different efforts that were all in place to try to help our children. And so at one point, we decided to have what we called a partner meeting, and we brought in about 30 different agencies. City of Vista was one of them, and just had people introduce themselves to one another. And it was remarkable that many of these providers, who were doing great things, making a difference in our community, were just not aware of all of the other efforts that were underway, all trying to improve the lives of children and improve our community. And it seemed to me at the time that there had to be a better way to organize these efforts so that we could optimize our impact and really transform our community in the most effective way. And around that point in time, I learned about this approach called collective impact. And I learned about it by going to different workshops, and it was a structure that seemed like it might help us to focus our efforts, use data to drive our actions, and optimize our effectiveness. And so we took a team down to city heights down in San Diego, where they had been implementing one of these efforts, and Mayor Judy Ritter was on that visit. This was a little more than three years ago. And we were really impressed with all the inter-agency cooperation, the coordination, the ability to get the right resources to the right children and the right families quickly, and they were seeing some phenomenal progress. A big challenge with this kind of approach, though, is that it takes time, it takes resources, it takes a lot of energy, and we all have full-time commitments as it is. So it's very difficult to bring these various groups together, align efforts, and use data to inform actions. And fortunately, we have been able to partner with the United Way of San Diego, and we have the CEO here with us tonight, Kevin Crawford, who's in the back. And the United Way has decided that they are going to support Vista as a community to help us implement this collective impact model, not to change the services or change the approach that we have, but to enhance it and help us to be more effective. And so tonight, what I'm going to share with you is an overview of how that process is evolving, where we are at this stage, and give you an update about this very exciting effort, which we have now called the Vista Partnership for Children. So, not sure if I'm supposed to point this in a particular direction. Power is helpful. As I'm trying to get this powered up, maybe that the battery's dead. In front of you, you do have a couple of handouts. One of them looks like this. It's a baseline report. I'll reference that in a moment. Another one is a two-page overview, which includes some contact information as well. You made that look so easy. Thank you. Okay. So, jumping into it, then. Part of what we realized as we're doing this work is that the lives of our children are impacted by many, many different components. So what happens at home with the families, quality of recreation services, law enforcement, quality of education, after-school providers, preschools, higher education, businesses, all of that has a big impact on the experience of a child and their development. And this idea that partnerships are important and critical is emphasized throughout the school district. We have just three values that we've identified as our core values. One of those is collaboration. And this is a visual of our blueprint, our house of learning, as we call it, and the foundation of our plan, of all of our plans, is family and community as partners. And we know that if we really want to impact the lives of children, we have to do this together as a community. And this isn't just about teaching and learning. This is about all of those different aspects that come together to really influence the direction and the development of our youth. And so this is a list of some of the agencies that have been involved in this from the beginning and continue to have a leadership role. And you'll notice we have institutions of higher education, like Cal State San Marcos. We have preschool providers. We have the Sheriff's Department. We have the city of Vista. Patrick Johnson has been instrumental in a lot of this work. We have the Chamber of Commerce. We have health providers, like the community clinic. We have mental health services, like Lifeline. We have our parents. We have lots of different leadership groups involved in this effort, all trying to help us align our efforts, optimize our impact. And as I mentioned, the role of United Way is really to serve as a facilitator, a convener, to help make sure that the logistics of all of this collaboration help us move forward in an efficient manner, and that is a service that is not to be underestimated, because, as I said, it's very, very challenging when you have lots of different agencies, lots of different agendas, to come together and align those efforts. And so United Way's been helpful, not only in terms of helping us organize this effort, but also connecting us with other models where they've seen success and giving us ideas about ways that we can be more effective. Part of this approach is focused on data. We don't want to just do programs or projects because they feel good or we think they might be helpful. We really want to look at lots of metrics to see, are these efforts really contributing to improvements in the lives of our children and in our community? And if you look at these metrics, some of them are related to the educational process, graduation rates and so on, but we are looking at many different facets: obesity, immunizations, early education, juvenile crime, child abuse. These are, again, all things that have a big influence on the experience of a child. And we have a group, which is called the Leadership Table, that comes together to provide strategic guidance for the group. We had a lot of discussion in the early stages about whether we wanted to create a new organization, another 501(c)(3), a new Board of Directors, and our community, so wonderful, we just said, we want to get to work. We don't need another bureaucracy. We don't need another structure, but we do need a way that we can get together and talk with one another and get to action. And so the Leadership Table is the group of leaders across a community that comes together to help set that strategic direction. City manager Patrick Johnson is on that group, as well as myself and many others, and this is a group that's helping to accelerate these efforts. And while we're looking at many different indicators, we do have some touchpoints that we believe are most critical. So looking at this as a cradle-to-career continuum, kindergarten readiness is an important checkpoint. Third-grade literacy, we know, is predictive of a lot of outcomes in adulthood. Looking at math and reading in eighth grade and then high school graduation, but also with this eye towards what happens even after graduation. Are children that are moving into adulthood, are they ready for careers? Are they ready to be contributing citizens? And there are lots of leading indicators along the way that we're tracking that relate to these critical milestones. And so after we reviewed the data as a group, and in that baseline report, you see all kinds of information that our teams have been digesting and making sense of. We really identified three areas that we think are the most important levers to help us improve. And one is kindergarten readiness. When we look at the data, we are well below state and county averages in terms of the percentages of our youth that are involved in preschool experiences. And when we look at our kindergarten data, we find that many of our five-year-olds are coming into school three years behind in terms of their academic development. So partnership with other agencies and really promoting greater access and success in early education experiences before kindergarten is one of our big focus areas. We also know that once students get into school, we have some challenges with what we call chronic absenteeism. About a quarter of our students miss nine or more days a year, and it's most pronounced in kindergarten, and then those patterns improve a little bit. There's a lot of research that shows that students that do miss a lot of school at that early stage become at risk. They fall behind. They are less likely to graduate from high school, more likely to end up needing lots of other services as they mature. So improving that attendance in the early grades is critical. And then, again, looking at our data in our community, we have a lower-than-acceptable rate of high school graduates that are ready to go straight to four-year college. And that's A through G is the jargon that we use, but it's really college readiness. And so we're focusing on the early experience and also making sure that before students graduate from high school, they are ready to move on, that they have choices, that they have a lot of options to prepare them for success. And we do have a lot of challenges. We have many students that live in poverty. We have many students that are learning the language. We have many students that have unstable housing situations, which is another reason that we need to work together to help improve our experience of our children. So this is a visual that I'll try to go through relatively quickly, that is an overview of the structure that we ended up establishing. So we have this Leadership Table, a cross-section of leaders in the community that's reviewing the data, setting some of the strategic direction. We've created a number of councils, including groups of parents, youth councils, a business council. Brett Johnson-Bach from the Chamber facilitates that. A data council, want to make sure we're informed in our actions. And then we have what we call these collaborative action networks that are spinning off and kind of the boots on the ground, implementing efforts to try to improve in our effectiveness. And surrounding all of this and helping to support it is the backbone staff, and that is the United Way. And this is a structure that took a lot of time for us to agree upon, but it's off to a good start. We shared this with one of our local assemblymen about a week ago, and he said, this looks fantastic. Why doesn't every community do this? And part of what I said is, it's really hard to get consensus around how you organize this. What is the structure? How do you make decisions? And it's taken us about three years to get to this stage, but we are moving now and moving in a very positive direction. So I appreciate the opportunity to share with you tonight. I want to make the council and the community aware that there will be many opportunities to get involved in these efforts. If you're aware of agencies, you're aware of individuals who would like to help, there is contact information on one of the handouts there. You can also go to the United Way of San Diego website, and there's a lot of information there. Or you can talk to me, and we'd be happy to assist. But I really want to thank the city for your support in this process. If it wasn't for the enthusiasm and the advocacy of the mayor and the city manager, I don't think we would have secured the support from the United Way, who's donating all of this time and energy to help us improve our community. And so I appreciate your partnership. I thank you for your continued support for our youth. Makes a big difference for the whole community. So thank you.
Thank you for bringing this to us, and this is a really important report, and we want our kids all to be better, so, starting with preschools. So it's really an important thing that you're doing, so I encourage you to continue.
I appreciate that.
Anybody want to say anything down there? I guess, thank you so much. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay, the next thing on our agenda is our consent calendar. There are items C1 through C7, and the recommendations on the consent calendar will be enacted in one motion unless an item is removed from the calendar. And any member of the public can remove an item by submitting a request to speak card to the city clerk, and then items removed from the consent calendar will be considered immediately following the adoption of the consent calendar. So with that, I have Councilmember Rigby.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to pull C7, please.
And Councilmember Aguilera.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. C5?
Okay. And with that, do I have a motion for the balance of the consent calendar?
Yeah, make a motion for the balance.
I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second for the balance. Please cast your votes. That motion passes unanimously. So we will now go to item C5 on a consent calendar. Would you like a report?
Yes, please. Quick. That's fine.
A quick report, please.
It's a short item, so.
We have our traffic engineer, Sam Hassan, and that'll present the report this evening.
Sorry.
Good evening. So we received a request from a resident in the area to look at the uncontrolled intersection of Warmlands Avenue and Cuyahoga for some type of control. So we went through our standard evaluation process. We considered factors like traffic volumes, accident
Thank you for bringing this to us. And this is a really important report, and we want our kids all to be better, so, starting with preschool. So, it's really an important thing that you're doing, so I encourage you to continue.
I appreciate that.
Anybody want to say anything down there?
I guess, thank you so much. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay, the next thing on our agenda is our consent calendar. There are items C1 through C7, and the recommendations on the consent calendar will be enacted in one motion unless an item is removed from the calendar. And any member of the public can remove an item by submitting a request to speak card to the city clerk. And then, items removed from the consent calendar will be considered immediately following the adoption of the consent calendar. So, with that, I have Councilmember Rigby.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to pull C7, please.
And Councilmember Aguilera.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. C5?
Okay. And with that, do I have a motion for the balance of the consent calendar?
Yeah, make a motion for the balance.
I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second for the balance. Please cast your votes. That motion passes unanimously. So, we will now go to item C5 on a consent calendar. Would you like a report?
Yes, please. Quick.
That's fine.
A quick report, please.
It's a short item, so.
We have our traffic engineer, Sam Hassan, and that'll present the report this evening.
Sorry. Good evening. So, we received a request from a resident in the area to look at the uncontrolled intersection of Warmlands Avenue and Cali-Sinaloa for some type of control. So, we went through our standard evaluation process. We considered factors like traffic volumes, accidents, side distance at the intersection. And based on the side distance factor, the analysis determined that the eastbound approach, which would be Cali-Sinaloa, does not meet the minimum side distance threshold. And therefore, the analysis recommended a stop sign for eastbound. And to, you know, since eastbound qualified for a stop sign, obviously, we wanted to do the westbound also because that's the same street, Cali-Sinaloa.
So, we had one complaint, one concern?
Correct. It was a concern that was brought up a few years ago, and then again, a few months ago. But generally, that's how a lot of our evaluations are initiated, by complaint from the public.
Because my concern is noise for the, you know, I used to live by a stop sign, and stop signs are pretty noisy. And people don't realize, at the middle of the night, people go screeching to a halt. But the biggest noise really comes from the cars that have to stop and then start up again. And, you know, that's right in the middle of a neighborhood that, to me, doesn't seem like it's very busy. I know that, I read the letter, and I guess your numbers show there's 400 comings and goings throughout the day?
Yeah, which is very low, really. It is low volume.
That's a pretty low volume, and I am venturing to guess that almost 90% of those vehicles are from just the neighborhood right there.
Most likely, yes.
You know? It just seems like there's a, I think there was, there's a car that's speeding through there, is kind of what I gathered from it.
That was not brought up as a factor, and not in the complaint, and nothing that we considered. So, it was based on the technicality of it, really.
That's not what you considered, right?
No. It was just the eastbound. And that's kind of a difference between always-stop evaluations versus two-way. Two-way stop evaluations, side distance is a much bigger factor. That's why, in this case, the volumes were not even considered. I mean, there's a point where volumes become important in two-way stop evaluations, but the first step is side distance, and it could have qualified just based on that, which is what happened in this case. So, as far as the volumes, you're right, they're very low. Most likely, at night, there won't be probably, you know, many, if any, so probably the noise issue won't be an issue. Nonetheless, technically, did qualify for the stop sign in Cali-Sinaloa.
Okay. Was everybody in the neighborhood notified?
We notified the entire length of Cali-Sinaloa, as well as that stretch of Warmlands south of Foothill.
Okay.
And we did receive one concern from one of the properties, right? There's an email in the packet.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Rigby.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I do have a question. The letter that was written requesting the installation of a stop sign referenced at this intersection of Warmlands and Cali-Sinaloa. And it says that the speeding through is coming down on Warmlands, but your stop sign is to be installed on both sides of Warmlands, actually on Cali-Sinaloa. So, I'm not sure how the stop sign on the side streets is going to impact the flow and the speeders coming down Warmlands. And I also see the stop sign on Cali-Sinaloa, you'll see on the left side of the screen, is really an entire house width down the street from the upcoming Warmlands. So, somebody's going to be stopped at that stop sign, and they still can't see down Warmlands. And so, they're still going to do what they do now, and inch out, inch out, inch out, until they go, or that they can see that it is safe. So, those were my two questions. If the traffic problem is coming down Warmlands, that should probably be where the stop sign is. And the stop sign on that particular stretch of Cali-Sinaloa, I'm not sure how helpful that's going to be when you have such a great distance from the stop sign to where you can see traffic coming down Warmlands. So, I'm not sure that this is going to be the effective tool that we need to help solve the problem on this situation.
I agree. Good question.
So, the, as I mentioned, the speeding was not considered and does not, you know, to get considered in two-way stop evaluations. So, in this case, it was purely the side distance. So, what we do in the analysis, we go around the intersection. Basically, we consider it approach by approach. So, we looked at the southbound, you know, Warmlands, northbound Warmlands, eastbound, Cali-Sinaloa. So, the approach that did not meet the side distance is Cali-Sinaloa. And based on the standards, that's where a stop sign gets recommended or installed. So, again, this is just purely on the, you know, the kind of the technical evaluation for a two-way stop control, regardless of the speeds. And when the analysis basically determines that one of the approaches does not meet that side distance, then that's where the stop sign is recommended. So, as far as the geometry of the intersection, it is obviously, you know, unusual and skewed. And the stop sign there would be just to guarantee that a vehicle doesn't just proceed, and I've seen it, you know, from observing the intersection, some vehicles just kind of proceed through without stopping in all directions, really. So, that would guarantee that that approach on eastbound, where a vehicle would not have adequate side distance just to keep going without stopping first, that eliminates that condition. So, most likely, they will stop, and then kind of in shops, at least they can see, versus kind of just proceeding without stopping. So, that's the objective of it.
And I see Councilmember Franklin, but I was just going to say, I agree with you. When I look at this, it looks like the problem is really on Warmlands rather than Cali-Sinaloa. And it seems like the, where the stop sign is, it looks like they can't, they can't see. And that's kind of what the letter was saying, is that the problem was on, I would do a four-way stop if I was the traffic person, but Councilmember Franklin.
Yeah, I, I mean, it looks, have you, does the geometry of the intersection allow someone to see the oncoming traffic on Warmlands while they're stopped at where you proposed to put the sign?
They would have to pull out further than they could see.
Why not, why not consider a yield sign so that the duty to yield is clearly noted for, would a yield sign not serve enough of a function there?
Just from my experience with the yield signs, generally, they're pretty ineffective because people kind of treat them as, you know, just kind of rolling through them. But, you know, having said that, obviously, the technical criteria recommended the stop signs, or the stop sign, Cali-Sinaloa eastbound. Of course, we're open, you know, to switch it to Warmlands, or, you know, since the intersection's very low volume, and it probably kind of warrants some kind of control, of course, we'd be open, you know, to do it at a Warmlands or an always-stop, even if that's, you know, the council's wish.
To me, as a responsible driver, a yield sign says, "Slow down." You have the obligation to make sure the intersection's clear, whereas the stop sign, after I come to a complete stop, then, you know, if I can't see any traffic, then obviously, I've slowed down, but, you know, then I'm taking off again and building my speed. So, it's, as some have said, if you're going to do a two-way, one on a four-way, I just think the yield sign, it does communicate to drivers that it is their responsibility to make sure the right-of-way is clear, and that they do not possess the right-of-way in that intersection. So, that's my thought.
Councilmember Campbell.
I'm going to differ a little bit from the rest of the council on this one, only because a lot of times, traffic control doesn't make a lot of sense on paper, looking at a map. But I'm going to defer a little bit to our traffic engineer on this one. You know, I think a yield sign is great for responsibility if a driver has an accident for insurance purposes, to say, "Oh, that person didn't slow down. There was a yield sign." But I think what we're trying to accomplish is preventing safety issues from occurring in the future. There's a lot of locations, not only in Vista but in North County, that have stop signs at intersections similar to this, that if you stop at the stop sign, you cannot see the oncoming traffic due to sidelines. But it does put that responsibility for the driver to stop and then proceed at a slower pace out into the intersection. I don't think that this particular intersection would warrant, in my opinion, a four-way stop. What do you, is that something, would that meet the criteria, the technical criteria for a four-way stop?
Based on the volumes, it would not. The volumes are really low. Nonetheless, you know, since the volumes are that low, you know, it's something, you know, that could be considered. Or, again, you know, just since the volumes are so low and so close to each other in both approaches, it could be considered on Warmlands also.
Right. To me, this is a very, very low-traffic-volume intersection. We don't want to change it up so much that it's an inconvenience for people proceeding on Warmlands to have to stop, and there's never another car at the other side of the stop at the intersection. By putting the stop signs where you've proposed, I think it would create the through-traffic on Warmlands, allowing them to know that the traffic, at least, is supposed to stop on Sinaloa, and would address the safety concern with minimal impact to the traffic flow. Is that a fair assessment from a technical standpoint?
Right. That would be the objective.
Thank you.
Councilmember, or Deputy Mayor Aguilera.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I don't think a four-way stop would make this any better because the northern part of Warmlands Avenue is barely a paved road. It's, used to be dirt and a dead end, actually, until recently. And now, it's, like I said, it's half dirt, half blacktop. So, I think we've spent enough time on this.
So, what is your pleasure?
Councilmember Rigby. I'm sorry. I, thank you, Madam Mayor. I still have just a couple of questions. Have there been any tickets given to any speeders on this road?
I don't have that information.
Have there been any accidents at this intersection?
No. And not in the last, recent history, at least.
Okay. And according to what I read in the staff report, and Deputy Mayor Aguilera alluded to, there was one request for the stop sign. We have an equal number of requests to not install this stop sign. So, I just wanted to make that point. So...
It could remain under control, too.
Thank you.
Okay. Anybody? What shall we do on this one? Go with staff recommendation or turn it on into motion?
I can interject here and just ask, Mr. Hassan, if the council's not supportive of a stop sign at this location, is there an alternative that you might recommend?
I think Councilman Franklin's suggestion of a yield sign could be an alternative.
I agree with installing a yield sign.
Do I have a second on that?
Would the yield sign be on both, on all the?
No, that would be just a, we would have to choose a street.
Well, I'll leave it to you guys, but I can support a yield sign. I mean, that...
Is that a compromise?
That'll be a compromise, yeah.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, and a yield sign instead of a stop sign. So, I guess, cast your votes, please. Oh, it's passed unanimously. Congratulations, you guys. Okay, the next item will be item seven on our agenda, which is the appointments to the commissions. And that is Councilmember Rigby.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I don't particularly need a report on this one. This was just appointments to the commissions. And I just wanted to make a comment on the request for appointment to the Public Arts Commission for a representative from the Vista Unified School District. And I know that we have VUSD representatives on a couple of our commissions, including the Traffic Commission and the Parks and Recreation Commission, which makes complete sense, given the synergistic relationship that we have in those areas with the school district. I was wondering why we have a representative on the Public Arts Commission. And when I inquired, I was told that it helps facilitate involvement in projects, to have the students get involved in these projects. If we have a school district representative to take the information back and to the schools and get participation. And that in the last two or three months, that there has not been a representative from the school district. Student participation in projects for the Art Commission has been a little bit lessened. So, I can understand where they're coming from, but I would just ask the Public Arts Commission to remember that not all students in the Vista city limits and the Vista Unified School District sphere of influence actually attend public schools. We have a lot of students who attend private schools. And I know that there have been some events that they have not been invited to and have not been alerted to. So, I appreciate the Public Arts Commission wanting to use the school district to reach out to our student community. But I would like to ask the Public Arts Commission to remember the rest of our student community that is not enrolled in public schools. So, I just wanted to make that comment. And with that, I would ask that we approve item C7.
Do I have a second, if someone?
I'll second it, yeah.
Second to move on. Okay. Motion and a second, please. Cast your vote. That motion passes unanimously. Which leads us to our discussion items. And items scheduled for discussion generally require a detailed explanation by staff and agency member input. So, tonight, we have two discussion items. And the first one, D1, is our Downtown Specific Plan Tattoo Establishment Selection Process. And our Director of Community Development Engineering, John Conley, will introduce the item.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is a follow-up from the September 22 meeting where the council approved the Downtown Specific Plan update. In so doing, the allowance was made for one more tattoo establishment within the city, specifically within the downtown area. The allowance is for within certain districts of the specific plan. So, tonight, we're coming back to the City Council to request direction on how you would like to select an applicant for that opportunity. Once an applicant is selected, they'll be required to obtain a special use permit and go through a discretionary approval process, which would go to the Planning Commission or on appeal to the City Council. So, with approval of the Downtown Specific Plans, just shown on the slide here, there were three specific areas that were targeted for the tattoo shop opportunity. Those are shown in the black. They're the Transit, Historic Downtown, and Paseo-Santa Fe districts, generally the area around the Historic Downtown, the Transit Center, and along the spine of South Santa Fe. So, there are three options we're presenting to you this evening. One is first-come, first-served, where the first person that gets their application put together and submits fees can go through the process. One is through a lottery, where we could take all of the interested applicants and make a random selection of who that applicant could be. And one is through a proposal process, which I'll elaborate on. A proposal would involve the preparation of a request for proposals, which we would send out to all of the interested parties that have contacted us regarding this opportunity, which could include the following criteria: the proposed interior and exterior designs for the facility itself, the tenant that would occupy the space background, including their experience, their involvement within the community, and references, as well as a business plan for the establishment. Once the proposals are submitted, we recommend establishing a committee to review those proposals and make a recommendation to the council, which could include two city council members, the city manager, myself, the Community Development Director, the Economic Development Director, and the Sheriff's Captain. Once those, once the committee reviews the proposals, we would bring back a recommendation from the committee to the City Council, and we would make a decision in a public forum. Following that, as I mentioned, the applicant would be required to go through a special use permit process. And so, that completes my staff presentation. I'm available for any questions.
I have two speakers. Would you like to hear the speakers first? Okay. First speaker is Sam Phillips.
Madam Mayor, councilmembers, as the driving force kind of behind this whole tattoo establishment, I just wanted to say that I agree with staff's recommendation on the third choice. I think that the city would be able to pick out of the applicants the best person for the job. That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Brett Schonson-Bach?
With your "Ala Vista" shirt on. Yeah. Sorry, just came from cross-country practice, so, a little dressed down today. The board would just like to encourage you to choose option three and not to choose either of the random processes for selecting a company to take up the tattoo parlor. We feel like either of the random options could end us up in a situation where there's a less-than-desirable establishment. And we believe the review process that staff has presented as option three would give us the best chance to make sure we have some quality control over what kind of establishment comes into the downtown, both from, you know, concern from the community, but also as a business in the downtown. We'd like to see that happen. So, we'd like to encourage you to adopt option three tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Aguilera.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, the only one that I could actually support is option three. I think the other one's just, we leave it to chance, and that's not a good idea. I think the whole idea, the whole reason that we limited it to one in our downtown areas because we wanted to have some control... areas, because we wanted to have some control in our downtown area, but at the same time, give those business owners an opportunity to showcase their business and their talents. I would just like to add, some of the things I think that we need to consider would be the hours for an establishment downtown, something that closes at seven or eight o'clock at night, have something regulated over the weekends, not looking to have the one o'clock tattooing parlor downtown. And also, I talked to the City Manager about this, but we need to have criminal background checks on owners, and I guess that can be done through LifeScan, and I think you have the health certificate and all that in here, so, but definitely with support having a committee, and if we do support, if the rest of the council supports, I volunteer to be on that committee. Thank you.
I have one other speaker that came up here, Chris Yvonne.
I'm Chris Yvonne, I own one of your tattoo establishments in the city. I would just like to just ask the council for the consideration of the businesses, the two businesses that have been in your city for the last five years, that if we could get a special consideration, if we would like to move into that spot before anybody else. I know that me and Jason have kind of championed tattooing in your city for the last five years, and I believe that the zoning of where you're putting the tattoo shop is very beneficial to that business, so for some of the businesses that have been here for the last five years that aren't in such a beneficial spot for the type of business that we have, I just, I don't think it's fair that, you know, we've been here for the last five years, and now that there's a new shop that you guys are allowing without all the, I don't know exactly what the zoning regulations will be, but I know that we had to go through some regulations that, you know, 500 feet from alcohol, 500 feet from a school, I don't know if those will also be attached with that new permit as well, but I'd just like to kind of voice my opinion about that, and I hope there's some kind of a consideration for the two business owners that have been in your city conducting business in this venue, so.
Thank you, I think if we go with them, whatever, you know, if we go with option three, the selection committee could reapply to them, so, and talk about that, so.
Okay.
Decide what we're going to do here.
Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Campbell?
I'm going to agree with the Deputy Mayor on this. With the exception of the LifeScan required, putting that as a requirement, I'm a little concerned from a legal standpoint, could we require a business, is there a correlation between the type of business in this particular instance and requiring a criminal background check for obtaining a business license? Maybe the city attorney could quickly, or briefly, address that.
Councilman Campbell, we would have to evaluate whether or not there is evidence that would support that, and we'd be happy to advise the committee on that at the appropriate time.
All right, thank you.
Plus, I know as a Realtor, we had to do LifeScan, so I don't know that, you know, other businesses, I don't know, let him look at that.
Right, I think there has to be a correlation between the type of business and criminal activity to require that, and that's something that I would rely on the city attorney to develop that recommendation on. But besides that, I would actually like to make a suggestion that we add, that we do go with option three, so I'm actually going to make a motion that we do go with staff's recommendation to create this advisory committee, but I would like to add a representative from the Chamber of Commerce to this process. I think having that input from the downtown businesses would be beneficial to this, and I would like to volunteer as well, if that would suit the council, to serve with the Deputy Mayor on the panel.
Okay, Councilmember Rigby?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I agree with my colleagues, and I think the third option is probably the best option, and I like some of the comments that our speakers brought up, just to remind us of some things, so I think, I thank you for that. And I thought Deputy Mayor Aguilara had already moved that we do this, so I was going to second that, but I guess you guys would work that out. But I was also going to volunteer to be on this committee, so we'll work that out, I guess, somehow.
Councilmember Franklin, do you want to volunteer also? I don't either. Okay, so, so I have a motion and a second, right? If there's no more discussion, do you have anything?
Well, we'd like to know tonight, if possible.
Oh, the communities, can I appoint them?
Who are the two individuals that are going to serve on this committee?
Oh, well, okay, is, does the, does that include the chamber then? Do we, is that, your motion include the chamber representative, that he? You made the motion. Oh, you made the motion, and include the chamber representative, okay. Is that agreeable, is that too many, there's a lot of people on a committee?
I think that's fine.
Do we want to ask the chamber if they want a seat at the table?
Okay, yeah, they will, I'm sure they'll. Okay, so we have, on the committee will be then two council, city council members, City Manager, Community Development Director, Economic Development Director, Sheriff's Captain, and a representative from the Chamber of Commerce. Okay, so now we have to pick, how am I going to pick two committee members? Out of three that volunteered?
Would you like a coin?
A coin?
I'm kidding.
Okay, well, okay, I'll pick Deputy Mayor Aguilara, because he volunteered first, but that's not fair, because everybody pushed their buttons, too. So what do you think, any do you want to drop out? No? Sure, you want, do you want to apply for a job? I can't put three of them on, because we only can have two people on a committee, so it's only two, so. Does anybody else want to pick? Are you leaving that to me? Okay, how about, how about Councilmember Franklin, would you serve on it if I put you and Deputy Mayor Aguilara?
Yeah, I would serve.
Okay, and then I'll, that will take out the other, how about that? Okay, I'm going to appoint Deputy Mayor Aguilara and Councilmember Franklin, I'll do it that way, that means...
Actually, my motion does not include the mayor making the appointments.
Oh, who does, then?
The council does.
Okay, well...
So, we can vote on it. Who wants to volunteer?
Oh, my gosh. Your, your motion included making the council make the appointment?
No, my motion includes creating the committee, but it doesn't...
Doesn't the, doesn't the mayor usually appoint things?
No, the council approves it, so we've been through this process before.
So that's my, so that's my motion, I would nominate Deputy Mayor Aguilara and Councilmember Franklin. Do I have a second from anyone?
I'll second that.
Okay.
I think we have to vote on the first motion first.
Is that correct, we have to vote on the first motion first? Okay, okay.
Not to make this confusing, but, or complicated.
Let's vote on the first motion, please cast your votes on the first motion. That motion passes unanimously, and now we will vote on the second motion. That motion passes unanimously. Wow, thank you, guys, we got a good decision. Okay, now, moving on to the next thing, is our next discussion item, D2, Proposed General Plan Amendment and Zone Change for 1630 South Melrose Drive, and the Director of Community Development Engineering, John Conley, will introduce that item also.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is a proposed request for a general plan amendment and zone change at 1630 South Melrose Drive, which is near the intersection of South Melrose and Buena Vista Drive in southern part of the city. The applicant, in this case, is Wilmington Homes, who's here this evening. They submitted a request to him and the general plan, as I noted. The current general plan designation on the property is rural residential, they are asking to redesignate it to a mixed-use designation. The zoning is currently C1 commercial, and they are asking to redesignate it to mixed use with a maximum density of 20 units to the acre. Staff is requesting the City Council's direction this evening related to the proposed land use changes prior to acceptance of a formal development application from Wilmington Homes. Direction from the council would be advisory to the applicant and staff, as no final decision would be rendered on the project this evening, it's simply giving the applicant some direction on, as to whether or not the council would be supportive of their request. The project location, as I mentioned, is southeast of the intersection of South Melrose Drive and Buena Vista Drive, addressed as 1630 South Melrose. It's currently occupied by a church, which was, I believe, the Church of Christ Scientist, and a parking lot landscaping. The property was developed about 15 years ago by the church. They've reduced their collective group that attends the church, and they've moved off-site, and so they've begun marketing the property. Wilmington Homes approached staff a couple months ago to ask if the city would be supportive of changing the general plan to allow for a condominium development here, and so that's the reason we're before you this evening, to obtain your input on that request. The slide right now shows the existing general plan and zoning on the property. As I noted, the general plan is rural residential, which allows a residential use at one unit per acre. The zoning is commercial. There is currently an inconsistency between the general plan and the zoning, and the reason for that is the church is on the property, and a church is allowed in either zone with a special use permit. So when we updated our general plan in 2012, we did not change a designation on this property, because we envisioned that the church would be staying there for the foreseeable future. Wilmington Homes has submitted a conceptual site plan, which I provided to the council for your information. As I noted, this is no approval of the project, but just to give you an idea of how they would like to develop the property, they're proposing to build 54 condominium units, which would be several three-story condominium units with parking and amenities on site. And this gives you an idea of the architectural design that they're proposing for the buildings, which is a somewhat contemporary design that they've developed in other portions of Southern And with that, staff's presentation's complete. As I mentioned, the applicant is here to answer any questions related to their proposal, and I'm available as well. Thank you.
Okay, I have four speakers, shall we go with the speakers first? Okay, Nikki Hobson?
I get to be first.
You're first.
Good evening, Mayor Ritter, councilpersons, and ladies and gentlemen. My name is Nikki Hobson, and in making these comments, I represent the Board of South Vista Communities. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak, to speak to you on this agenda item. We support the request for the zoning change that's being, being asked for, because this will permit the construction of some quality multifamily residences which are needed in South Vista, and this property really lends itself very well to that proposed use. We've reviewed the preliminary plans and, and have suggested a couple of suggestions to the, to the developer, changes that we think would make the project even better than he is proposing. These include modification of the exterior architecture to better reflect the Spanish land-grant heritage and history of Vista, so Mediterranean, Tuscan, something like that, rather than the more contemporary. And in addition, we've suggested that adding more onsite parking spaces would be very useful to accommodate the realistic estimate of the needs of the residents who will live there. There is very little on-street parking there, so if they can't park on the site itself, they're going to be going to the Burger King Lot or some other place, so parking could be a problem. And I'm pleased to say that the developer has been very receptive to our suggestions, and we hope to continue working with him throughout this process. In addition, though, one major reason that we're supporting this project is that it's for condominiums and not apartments. Property owners put down roots and value the, the long-term health of the community. This is their home, they expect to be here for five, 10, 15, even 20 years, unlike transient, short-term population you find in most rental properties. We believe that condo development, instead of apartments, should be the direction of future multifamily residential construction in Vista, and we hope that you'll consider that even when you're considering other projects. So, bottom line is, we urge you to accept the, the recommendation to change the zoning. We think it's a wonderful project and are looking forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you, and I don't know if you mentioned you represent South Vista Communities? Yes, okay, thank you, Nikki. The next speaker, Mike Havas, Hayes? Havas, Havas?
Mike Havas.
I don't have my glasses on. I can't read it, Mike, sorry.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, councilmembers, other officials. Before I start with my remarks, I do want to pass along my condolences to the council on the recent passing of former Mayor Bernard Rappaport. I reside in 1633 Wesley Way. In your picture here, you can almost see it, it's just north of the top purple line there, we're kind of opposite of Unitarian Church. I'm also on the Board of Directors of our HOA, and I'm talking on behalf of them as well as myself. Buena Vista Colony consists of 25 individual, single-family homes on one dead-end street, Wesley Way. Aside from the homes on Live Oak area, we're the closest homes to this property. We have a keen interest in any development so close to us. We have a few concerns. One, any development in our neighborhood should maintain, or preferably enhance, the single-family character and nature of the neighborhood, maintain or preferably enhance our property values, and maintain or preferably enhance the quality of life in the neighborhood. Further, we're very concerned about any increase in traffic directed out of the 7-11 parking lot onto Buena Vista in either direction. Our street, Wesley Way, is a dead end, our ingress and egress are only on Buena Vista. In the mornings, particularly during rush hour, traffic backs up there. It's not easy to make a left or right turn out of Buena Vista, out of Wesley Way onto Buena Vista, or to come out of that parking lot where the 7-11 is. We have approximately 25 homes and about 16 street parking spots on our street. There is some parking on Buena Vista that seems to be suitable for a lot of folks that want to try and leave their cars there for quite a while. Additionally, people that live in some of the apartments that are obsolete across the street, next door to Albertson's, in that shopping center, will park on our street or on Buena Vista. So as the previous speaker spoke about, we're certainly very concerned about parking and traffic. It's very difficult, as I mentioned, to get out of there as it is, aside from having the residence of these units. Additional heavy traffic would make things worse, not better. And finally, we ask simply that the council and city planners, other officials, take into account the parameters that I've just mentioned when considering any development of this property. Thank you.
Thank you. Oops, our next speaker is Sean, this is Sunucci?
Good evening, council, audience. My name is Dr.
Speak right in the microphone, right there, yes, we can all hear you.
Okay, good evening, council and audience. My name is Dr. Sean Sunucci, I'm in emergency medicine. I am speaking for, I live in the area, actually directly across, and I'm speaking for many neighbors that are there. We are opposed vehemently opposed to this for a number of factors. We feel this is not right for our community, because as many of the other people have stated, this building would be a three-story building, it'll be the tallest building in the whole area, it will just stick out. There's a ramp or a hill, it will make the buildings even taller, that will bear down on our community. And some of... As some of the other speakers have said, the architecture of this building is completely out of line with the Spanish Mediterranean architecture. It will be an eyesore. Beyond that, we are also concerned about the traffic. That is a very heavily trafficked area already. We have a high school and two schools. At 3:00 to 4:00 o'clock in the afternoon, the traffic is very tough to try to negotiate through. We have school buses that stop on the street on Live Oak already backing up traffic, and they're going to put in 50 units, I believe. They want this to be for families. This is not a good area for kids. They don't have a place to play. And as one of the teenagers on our street mentioned, they're going to put up a six-foot wall, and she said, hey, that's easy to hop. What's to keep traffic from increasing on Live Oak? They're going to have one entrance. I don't know if in two years, three years, they're going to have to put another entrance in on Live Oak. We're already overloaded. Another factor that's concerning me as a doctor, being in emergency medicine, is the 911 calls. You're going to put 50 units in. That's going to increase the, or decrease the 911 response time. Now, if this is your heart attack, you want that four-minute response time. You're putting in 50 units there. That's going to affect that response time. We have a lot of elderly's in this community who need that four-minute response time. This is a major concern. Other concerns are, we'd like to know what else this could be zoned for. Is there something else we could put in there? We haven't heard any alternatives. We've just heard this, or I think a commercial, something commercial, but we'd like to know about some other possibilities. I'm sure Wilmington Housing is a nice company, but this group of condos is not right for this community. It's a small area. It would increase the traffic. It would put a load on the 911 system, and there really is no place for the kids to play. Where are they going to play? They're going to be hopping the fences. It's just not a good place. It's good for Wilmington, but it's not good for our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Tony Arnest.
Madam Mayor, members of the City Council, good evening. My name is Tony Arnest. I am the project manager with Wilmington Residential for the proposed project, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have or try to clarify any questions or concerns that have been raised either this evening or that you may have presently on your mind to think about.
Could you address the issue of the height?
The condominiums that are being proposed are three stories. Depending on, and again, I think it's important to reiterate, this is conceptual. When you come into the city, you have to have a concept, so you come in with a site plan, you come in with a concept for architecture. We've heard through two community outreach meetings differing opinions on what people might like to see. Some want to see a more traditional historical architecture that sort of fits into, you know, the historical fabric of the city of Vista. Others have indicated that they'd like to see something a little more modern, a little different, something perhaps even eclectic. There's a, obviously, an architecture for everyone, and certainly many city planners have told us in the past they don't want everything to look the same. We, as a development company, build all kinds of architecture, and we're certainly very flexible in terms of what that can be. So by no stretch of the imagination are we locked into what you've seen in the conceptual plan. It was the best way for us to illustrate something that we thought would fit. We thought it's something that's been very well-received by the general buying public, which is an important consideration from our business side of how we look at things, but by no stretch of the imagination are we committed to or locked into that as a given. The three-story product has been very successful with the demographics. It's looking for a price point at this particular project's size. The key for this project is that it is three and four bedrooms. It is designed for a lot of buyers who want to be in, say, the low-to-mid 400 range. They don't mind the stairs, so it's probably not a successful project for most seniors, but it probably would be a very successful project for millennials and those who want to buy a home at a price point they can afford. It's a location that is very exciting in terms of its ability to get to a lot of the amenities that are located in the city. We've looked at traffic in a general sense. A traffic report that would be done through a consultant that the city would recommend would probably look at the more detailed aspects of how a 54-unit project would impact existing streets and traffic. But the three-story was designed primarily to be responsive to this new buying public that wants to have a downstairs bedroom for perhaps a parent or an aging relative, two or three other bedrooms to be used by the family, and then to have the verticality of it so that there's a separation of space where the bedrooms are generally at the top floor, living spaces for your kitchen, your common areas and so forth, your living rooms in the central area, and then your garage and a bedroom downstairs as a structural design. It's just something we think, you know, would fit what we're trying to accomplish.
I guess what I'd like to know, when you come back to us in discussion, can you take a look at surrounding heights and what would, you know, what would the impact be on the visual horizon in the area? But we don't have to get into that right now. The other thing is, have you given any consideration, or how much consideration have you given to the question of whether or not you would need ingress and egress from Live Oak?
At this point, there is no anticipated need for access to Live Oak. We've talked with Mark Barrow, with the fire marshal, on this specific issue. We've talked with planning on this specific issue. We've talked with our civil engineer on this specific issue. Given the size of the project, which I know 54 units to some seems like a lot, to others it's a very small project by comparison. One point of access is all that should be needed. Whether it's a gated community or not will depend upon ultimately things that will be decided beyond the scope of our discussion this evening, but there is no desire or interest at this point or likelihood there would be any reason or ability to take an access off of Live Oak. Everything will come back out the common driveway. And one of the things that you may or may not be aware of is, there are four sites that comprise this area, two churches, the 7-Eleven and the Burger King. They all have a common access management agreement for that common road, and they all pay into maintaining it on, you know, a regular basis. So the use of the current site as a church has a fairly large parking lot that parks quite a few cars. Were it to be fully utilized and utilized as they originally had intended or as it perhaps may have been used in the past, there was, you know, whatever traffic was generated by that activity is not a whole lot more than what we would be proposing to do, I suspect. You never look at traffic at a snapshot. It's what you look at over a 24-hour period, over a seven-day workweek. But at the end of the day, the idea was that the one point of access, given what we understand historically about traffic usage, should be more than adequate to serve the purpose, and the fire department and planning suggested they seem to be in concurrence with the general concept.
Is that all your questions?
When we're done with speakers, I have a few more comments generally.
So he was the last speaker, and you were on the first question person, so I always thought you were.
Then I'd like to make a few comments then. I just want to say in general, thank you very much for bringing this project to the city of Vista, because I think it's a good project.
Thank you.
You know, if you build this plan with the access way, I'm actually of the opinion it's a relatively small number of homes here. I don't think it's going to have, I think most of these folks are going to exit directly to Melrose or to...
Which is the arterial...
Buena Vista.
Yeah, Buena Vista.
I'm very familiar with this intersection. I'm there pretty frequently. I don't think that volume of trips that you're going to add is going to be a detrimental impact to that intersection or to Melrose there. I would ask that when you come back for approval of the project, that you've considered and have adequate parking, so that, I think that's going to be a critical thing, is we want to know that you're not going to impact parking in the strating area. You can fully park the project.
To just tell you the parking count, there'll be 130 total spaces. That takes into account the extra half a space for the four bedrooms, which by code is required, and the .25, which is for the guests, so that the site plan that you saw, presented, is to code. If additional parking is required, we'll try to figure out some way to put it in there.
But generally speaking, I just, I wanted to add about this, why I support this change. I think we need more, I think this would be great for the businesses right there in that area. I do think it'd be an exciting place to buy. I think at some point during the time I've lived in Vista, this would have been an exciting product. I would have been interested in owning, had it been available. So I think generally, it's really positive, and I would second what Mrs. Hobson said about this being a for-sale project. I'm very excited about the fact that you're creating a for-sale project, that people become long-term investors and residents in our city and really stakeholders in our community. I think that's exciting. I hope we see more of this kind of project. So thank you. This is needed and appreciated.
My pleasure.
Okay. And remember that the direction from our council is advisory to staff and applicant. It's not a final decision related to the project. We're just here to talk about that. Okay, so with that, I'll go, do you all have questions of him? So do I wind him up here? No, okay. So you could take a seat, and if they have questions, they'll call you back up.
Madam Mayor, council, thank you very much for your time.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Rigby.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Actually, I do have a question for you, Mr. Conley. The change for the, the change for the general plan would be, it's currently zoned for one dwelling per acre.
Correct.
New change would allow for 40 dwelling units per acre. Now, the gentleman from Wilmington's comment was this was conceptual, and we know how things evolve with projects through the city. If we changed this zoning to allow for 40 units per acre, is there an opportunity for this project to evolve into something more than 54 units total?
The general plan designation is the overall umbrella land use. The zoning is what implements the actual requirements for density. The zoning that they're requesting is mixed-use 20, which allows up to 20 units to the acre, so it could not exceed that density.
Okay. And I heard someone comment about the three-story building. This is 11 three-story buildings on three acres. That does concern me. I do applaud that it's a condominium project and not an apartment project, so that's something that we've talked a lot about needing more of in our community. I do have concerns about 11 three-story buildings on a three, just barely over three acres, and the driveway coming into that common driveway and the traffic. So I still have some questions and some concerns about changing the zoning for this and allowing an increased residential density. So I actually can't support this tonight.
Councilmember Campbell.
So I'm going to give you my two cents on Vista's development history over the past 30 or 40 years, which is, one of the reasons that in Vista, we don't have a lot of open space, when you look to other cities in North County like Carlsbad and San Marcos and even Oceanside to an extent, is because over the last several decades, Vista's development plan, and this is no way directed any staff currently working for the city. If you look from satellite imaging from Vista, it's like you put all the development, the housing units into a jar, shook them up, and threw it out into the city. And it results in bad traffic, lower emergency response times, higher costs for road maintenance, sewer system maintenance, and every system that we provide in the city, it costs more. We get lower revenue. In other cities like Carlsbad and San Marcos, that are cities that are a little bit more forward-thinking in their development, put densities of units into smaller areas and preserve open space, which results in lower traffic, higher property values, and on and on. Vista is going to continue to grow. We have zoning, there's property, it's part of the capitalism, it's part of the market forces that are going to drive our community. Every time we have one of these projects and we hear, we want single-family homes on a three-acre site, you know, put five homes on these three acres, put six homes, let me tell you, it's not realistic. It hurts the city economically, it hurts property values in the city, and it's not responsible planning for not only Vista but any community. If you look at what other cities are doing, you look at what smart-growth communities have done, it's put residential units in a smaller area, more compact, next to major corridors for traffic, for transportation, and that's where this project starts to go towards, but doesn't quite get there, in my opinion, for a couple of reasons. It's still stuck in the 1990s mold of automobile-oriented development. And, you know, when I met with developers previously, they described these housing units as starter homes, affordable units. Well, let me tell you, that's not the case. When you look at the area median income for Vista, like it or not, it's not $100,000 a year. It's not $70,000 a year. It's not $60,000 a year. It's lower and lower and lower. So what you're doing when we develop these units that are unattainable for 75% to 80% of the community doesn't benefit the constituents that put me here in office. It benefits a select few of our community who have higher incomes, who can purchase homes. I'm also really tired, every time, and from some of my council colleagues, of bashing apartment developments that are proposed or moving forward, or apartments in general in the community. That's what we have a real shortage of in this community. There's a housing crisis, not only in Vista but San Diego County. That's why traditional groups that would never have supported apartment developments are now doing so, because they see what the challenges are. You need to have affordable, attainable housing for your community's workforce, and this project doesn't do it. This project may be better for the property owners that are already around this development site, but it doesn't serve the community as a whole. And because of that, I'm not going to be supportive of the project as it's currently defined.
Deputy Mayor Aguilera.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First of all, we're only voting on the land use change tonight, right?
Providing direction on the land use change.
We're not actually approving the project?
Correct.
We're not even giving direction, yeah.
Okay, so we're not even voting on? My first question has to do with when the, if the land use does change and a project gets proposed, at that time, there will be an environmental impact report for all of the concerns that the people have had as far as traffic concerns?
There will be an environmental review, yes. It will...
Emergency response times and...
Correct.
Okay. So all that stuff's going to get covered?
It will be vetted as part of the discretionary application process.
Including the parking, I guess?
We probably need to talk about parking a little more before we end, but yes, it will be addressed as part of the application.
Okay, good. And I guess on my two cents, maybe different than Councilman Campbell's, I'm happy that it's a for-sale project because we are adding, you know, we've added quite a few rental projects, apartments and that, and I think the next step for people moving up from apartments is going to want to buy something, and believe it or not, that is a pretty good price point. You know, it's unfortunate, but that represents a good price point, but we are in Southern California, and that's the reality we actually live in. And so I like that it's a for-sale project, and I think it is at a good price point, and I think it would be good for the neighbors as well. I think I am interested in bringing up the property values of the surrounding community there. So I think that's something that we should be doing, and I think it's in a great area as far as very close to schools, right close to one of our major thoroughfares. You know, a lot of people work in the business park, our business park, but also the neighboring community of Carlsbad as well. So I think it's a great spot for up-and-coming young individuals. So I... So I think it's a great spot for up-and-coming young individuals, so I will be supporting the land use change.
And I just wanted to say one other thing, because I kind of take issue with Councilmember Campbell also, because Vista, I think, was developed as a rural community, that's what we've always been, and we've always tried to maintain that rural community atmosphere, and our city boundaries, when they were drawn, are smaller than, like Carlsbad, when they drew their city boundaries, were very large, so they had a lot of room to expand, and our city boundaries were drawn much smaller. So, but we have, you know, and we developed smaller, we've developed, you know, this side of the city, and then, and then Shatter Ridge was developed as a planned community. So I like Vista, because I think we have a little bit of everything for everybody. We have the larger lots in the older part of the city, and we have, you know, Shatter Ridge is more of a planned community, so we have something for everybody. So I just kind of take offense at that when he says that. And I agree with Deputy Mayor Aguilera on the, on this new project. I think for-sale is a good thing, the units, condos, I think those are needed. As a Realtor, I think that they're needed. We just built a lot of new apartments, some of our apartments' stock was getting older, so this, it's kind of exciting to have new, really nice apartments in town, and some new condos would be great too. So I'm supporting this. So I guess I'll go on to Councilmember Rigby.
You don't have to live there. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Since we're just providing direction, and I know I'm odd man out on this, perhaps for different reasons than Councilwoman Campbell, but yes, I see that we need to do something with this particular lot of land. I don't think that this is the right project. I don't know that residential, high-rise, three-stories density is the right project for this. So I don't want to be the person or the council that, just because we have to do something, we have to do this and do it now. I think the right project will come along, and if we look back and evaluate the vision that we have for this community and this neighborhood, we can pursue it and see if we can find the right project for it. I just don't feel that this is the right project at this time. So, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay, with that, I think we have given enough direction to the...
Couple things I want to cover real quickly, Mayor, so that the developer can hear loud and clear, and you can alleviate my concerns as we move forward.
Okay.
I heard a lot of concerns about parking this evening. As you've all been brought up to date with our parking standards, the mixed-use zone was developed for an urban core area, primarily for the downtown, near Sprinter stations where alternative transportation is provided for. So there's a much lower parking ratio in our mixed-use zone than what our standard parking requirements are. As the applicant indicated, he meets the code, but the code is much lower than what the citywide parking standards are. So the way this project's proposed right now, it's at about roughly a little over two spaces per unit. Our citywide standards are a little closer to three spaces per unit, which I think is probably a little bit more fitting with where the location of this project is, considering that it's not near really too many other transportation alternatives. So if parking really is a concern of the council, I'd like to make sure that the developer understands that meeting the code in this case won't necessarily meet your concerns with respect to parking.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Franklin.
Yeah, I'm glad you brought that up. I was actually going to ask that, and I'm sorry I didn't, but I'm glad you brought it up. I was thinking this was at the higher standard. So, do you feel that you can meet the higher standard with a different design? That's going to be important. Yeah, we don't want a traffic, we don't want a parking issue. So, we'll talk about it, we've got a lot of months between now and then, but that's important, that's going to be really important. There's got to be adequate parking, and it needs to be at the higher standard. No, 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 I understand that. I'm just, I'm just, you know, we can, we can talk further about it, but I'm hopeful that you'll be able to park at the higher standard. I just want to reiterate that as one of the three that's supportive of the project, that that's going to be, that's going to be very important. I hope that won't be a, I hope that'll be possible for you to get there, because I think that'll, and I think that'll make the values of the properties higher too. So, okay, great, thanks.
I think that's important to all of us, that is. So Deputy Mayor Aguilera.
I just wanted to reiterate that, I think we need to go with the higher standard for parking as well.
Councilmember Campbell.
As we had a discussion a couple of weeks ago about parking standards for the city, when do you think that we can look at updating and making more realistic some of our parking standards for zoning? Going forward? We are currently working with a consultant that we've hired to update our citywide standards, as well as review all the specific plan areas. We expect to come before the council, well, we're going to have a community meeting in November, the date is still to be determined, to gather public input, and then we'll be coming back to the council to have a workshop to allow the consultant to present the findings of the study so far, and then we're anticipating in the spring that we'll come back with a code amendment to present the staff recommendation. Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Okay, so now, do you have enough direction from us? Are you okay?
Absolutely, thank you very much.
Okay, well, with that, the next thing on our agenda are, is our oral communications, but we don't really have any. Do we have any? No, don't have any tonight. So, then I would go with reports from our members. I guess I'll start with Deputy Mayor Aguilera.
I actually don't have any reports. My meetings start on Thursday.
Councilmember Campbell.
I do have a couple of issues tonight. One, the first one I'd like to report on is the trip that I took with the San Diego Regional Chamber of Commerce, September 27th through 30th to Washington DC, which was the one-region-one-voice trip that the chamber took. It was the largest San Diego delegation to ever go back to DC, it's over 150 attendees, had over 20 meetings with various national officials, including seven different members of Congress, took a tour of the National Cybersecurity Communications and Integration Center, met with the new Chief of Naval Operations, which oversees a large amount of military spending in our region, which has direct economic impacts here in Vista, was a very productive trip. Also, would like to report that from the Regional Solid Waste Association, the city received a check for nearly $50,000 for environmental enhancement funding last week. And that's all.
Councilmember Franklin. Nothing tonight, okay? Councilmember Rigby.
Thank you, yes. The Sandag Policy Committee meeting for energy was canceled this week, so we didn't have that. But the Assistant City Manager, Alex Zimmerman, and I went last, last week or two weeks ago to San Jose for the League of Cities Conference. And we had some interesting workshops. Again, they're still talking about the road and highway infrastructure, and what they're going to do for that. They really are pushing, and I sat in on a workshop with Jim Madaffa, former San Diego Councilman, and he's currently on the California Traffic Commission. They really are pushing the road usage charge, the vehicle miles traveled, which would put the little black box in your car, and they would track your mileage for you and then charge you accordingly. So they're really pushing that. I sat in on the cap and trade discussion about how much money they've brought in and how they're trying to dispense that money throughout the communities. And there was also a workshop on drone technology. We talked about what the technology is, how it's useful, and how it does have negative impacts on the communities. And I don't know if you heard, but the governor vetoed the bill to ground drones in the event of an emergency, like what happened up north, where a couple of drones ended up grounding emergency firefighting equipment because of a fear of crashing them. And so it was kind of interesting that he would, he would veto that legislation. But I have spoken with the assistant, or with the city manager, Mr. Johnson, about this, and we're going to be bringing up some things, a discussion for drone issues here, because you know how I feel, just because Sacramento does or doesn't do it, doesn't mean that we have to or don't have to do what they're doing. So also regarding engaging residents in the digital age was an interesting workshop. So there were a lot of workshops that I went to, Ms. Zimmerman went to different workshops so that we could have different experience and get some more information as best we could, so that was very interesting. And then Friday this week will be the Public Safety Committee at Sandag, so that's what I've been up to.
Okay, and then I have a few little things. The Chamber's Annual Business Expo is tomorrow evening here in the Civic Center, is Morse Events Community Room, and there'll be over 40 business vendors to network with, and I think some of our brew, brews will be there, brew pubs, or whatever, what do you call them, brewers, thank you, I got the right word here. That event's from 4:00 to 7:00 tomorrow night, so. Monty Vista Elementary School is hosting a college and career fair on Tuesday, October 20th, from 5:30 to 7:30, and it's free and open to all Vista Unified School District students and parents. And our library is holding, oh, hosting free horror satire films every Thursday evening at 6:00 PM during the month of October, and they're going to serve popcorn, so if you want to get scared during October, Halloween month. The library is at 700 Eucalyptus Avenue, their number is 760-643-5100. Other thing is October is Rideshare Month. Residents can take the rideshare challenge to leave their solo transportation behind and choose to carpool, transit, bike or walk to their destinations during this month. So it's icommuteSD.org, you can get some more information on that. And then also, I attended last week Sandag, we had a meeting for, it was for close to five hours, we had over 100 speakers for our Sandag 2050 Plan, moving San Diego forward. It's the, it's kind of the blueprint for our future, and it was unanimously approved at that meeting. And then two things, not so good to report, Donna Dennis passed away, that was last, last week, and then she was one of our citizens, and also Bernie Rappaport, who was a former mayor, and he was such a great guy, he did so many things for Vista. His fingerprints are all over this community, even, he was just kind of quiet the way he did it, but he was instrumental in actually building the Civic Center and all of our projects, and that sales tax, he worked on the Sales Pax Initiative that we had, and he, the Vista Library was one of his pet projects, he worked a lot with the Friends of the Library, and he just was a great guy, and so he's going to be very missed, so. Did you have something to say? No? I see you poking the...
I'm ready.
You're ready, okay, you ready to go? Okay.
I'm ready to say something.
Oh, you're ready to say something? Okay, okay, that was all, then I was just, when I adjourn, I wanted to adjourn our evening to honor the memory of Bernie Rappaport, so.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, well, speaking of Bernie, I, this morning, I said that he was kind of the, one of our founding fathers here in the City of Vista, you know, a gentleman was 92, 93 years old, and he did a lot of things, not just here in Vista, you know, I mean, he went back to Israel, and anyways, he had a great history. The Union Tribune had a nice little article on him. But one of the things was the library, as you mentioned, and I attended, along with Councilwoman Rigby and the mayor, the 100-year anniversary for our library, and found out that it's one of the busiest libraries, not just in the county, but I guess...
United States.
In the United States. In 2012, it was ranked as the number one library in the United States, which is a huge honor. So we've got quite a crown jewel there.
Yes, and it checks out over a million books every year. I mean, it's just, it's amazing what they do.
Sounding.
Yeah, it is.
In addition to that, I attended the Fall Festival, and that was, that was good at the Alta Vista Gardens. And just an advertisement, I guess we'll be able to do this next month, but November, November Fest, instead of October Fest, is going to be held at the Alta Vista Gardens with the local breweries, so we got all our local breweries getting involved. That'll be November 21st, and I guess I'll remind you guys next month of that, so, go ahead, Mayor.
Okay. Now, our city manager probably has a few little things over here.
Couple.
Unless we took them all.
No, no, I echo the statements about Bernie Rappaport. He was a great man, father, husband, and leader in our community, and he'll be missed. Two updates, the annual statewide Shakeout Earthquake Drill takes place on Thursday, October 15th at 10:15 AM, and while we haven't been the epicenter of a major earthquake here, if you'd like to participate in the drill, you can go to shakeout.org and get more information, but that is this Thursday. And based on council's previous actions, the council has set aside over $7 million through the CIP for park development fees to upgrade our facilities in the community. And hopefully, you saw the Vista Connects article on what's going on and how we're spending the money, but there's a lot of exciting things happening in the city in terms of our parks and rec facilities, restroom upgrades, shade sales, tot lots, we're putting in two new skate parks, as you know, we're going to overhaul Bub Williamson Park, so there's a lot of great things happening in Vista that we should be proud of, so I just wanted to alert you to that. Thank you.
Okay, city attorney, anything tonight?
I've nothing to add this evening, thank you, Mayor.
How about our city clerk? Nothing tonight? Okay, with that, we are adjourned in honor of Bernie Rappaport tonight, so.